I will now call the March 19th, 2018 Blue Springs City Council Meeting to order. In just a moment, I'll ask you to stand with me, observe a moment of silence, and we're going to have Troop 175 from Timothy Lutheran come up and lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance. I think you've already been instructed is you're going to make your way right in front of us, and then when I turn around and look at you, that's when you'll start to pledge. Got it? Okay, you want to go ahead and start making your way up this way, and we're going to stand and observe a moment of silence.
To the flag of the United States of America, and to the Republic of which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Troop. Come back and say yes again. I want to welcome you in the audience, as well as those that might be watching on cable TV, to tonight's City Council Meeting. Next, we have the Consent Agenda, and Councilman Levyce has asked that we pull Items C, D, and E for discussion. Once we pull those, we accept a motion to accept the rest of the items on the Consent Agenda.
So moved.
There's a second?
Second.
Roll call, please.
Councilman Kayler.
Aye.
Councilman Levyce.
Aye.
Councilman Fowler.
Aye.
Councilman Carter.
Aye.
Councilman Edmondson.
Aye.
Councilman Culpepper.
Aye.
Mayor Ross.
Aye.
Carried unanimously.
Councilman Levyce.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I appreciate it. I'm sorry to start us out on a heavy topic here right at the beginning of the meeting here, but this issue of officer compensation is not a new one for us. We had a lot of discussion revolving specifically a step plan around the budget time, and it's unfortunately, in the last several months since we've had our budget discussions, this issue's become more important and not less important, as we've seen our surrounding municipalities begin to address this. Lee Summit has made some big strides in addressing their entire employee compensation, not just officers. We saw that Jackson County has up their base pay for what they start officers at. We've seen some cities in the Kansas side do that as well. And so it's unfortunate that Blue Springs is continuing to lag behind on what's becoming a very important issue. I think we've seen recently with the City of Clinton and a couple officers that were shot there, this is just a very important position, it's probably the most important position in public service, and this is not a new issue for the City of Blue Springs. Over the entire time I've been on this council, we've been talking about police department issues, and specifically employee compensation and police officer compensation. And so the only reason I will support this tonight is because out of the respect for the officers that spent a lot of hours negotiating this, and I don't want to prejudge any future agreements, but without us continuing to move forward with what we discussed at the budget time as a step plan and to begin to address this issue, I'm going to find it difficult to support these types of agreements in the future. So I think this is something we're really getting behind on, and I think we need to stop waiting on things like this study that we've put into place to address what's becoming what should be pretty obvious to us by now. So those are my comments, and I'll let anybody else jump in.
Councilman Edmondson.
If I may, and Councilman Levyce is right, we've, it seems like we've been working on this for probably going on five years as far as being serious about it, and we're making progress. Staff, I know, is being challenged by us, and I think staff is trying to respond to it as best they can, but I mean, sometime in the future, we may have to seriously start looking at maybe doing some cuts in programming to come up with the funds that we need to to keep valuable personnel here. You know, a city's responsibility is basically public safety, infrastructure, water, sewers. I mean, that's the basics that I think the citizens demand from us as a city, as an organization, to provide, and we'd like to say that we provide the best in county. I mean, Jackson County, we're probably one of the best ones at providing a lot of things, and we don't want to get behind on it. Again, I will support this, I will vote for this, but I still think we need to, we really need to seriously start looking at where we can try to come up with funds with, how we can come up with something to keep us in the mix and not fall to the back end of the pay scale in the metro area.
Anyone else?
Your Honor.
Yes.
I agree with both, and I would just ask, where are we on the step plan? Because we talked about it, we said we were going to study it, and I think with this big crowd and those folks watching on TV, I'd like an update on where we are.
Do you want to address that?
Your Honor, I'm going to defer to Christine Kates to respond to that, because Christine, through our HR department, is working with Springstead to do this analysis, and I'll just also make a note that we are currently, although you haven't approved it yet, there appears to be a need for a work session at the 5th Monday in April, in which we would hope to be able to present some information and have a discussion about this. That could be a long meeting, just giving you a heads up, and discussion of budget priorities as we go into the 2019 budget, but I'll ask Christine to respond to that.
Yeah, the study is underway, and we've met with Springstead a couple times to develop our comparison group for the other cities that we want to include in the final results of that study, and we are anticipating getting our first draft in the end of March, 1st of April.
Anyone else? Seeing none, Councilman Culpepper.
Yes, Your Honor, I think it's really important while, and I've said this, I don't know how many times, I wish we had a bucket of money we could just go ahead and do this with. We don't. I think we have a fiduciary responsibility here, and I would say that we really cannot make a decision until we have the study, and we sit down and we look at what our priorities are as far as moving money around to take care of this, but we really need to look at that study first. There's too many communities around us that even though they put in increases, they also took out of their reserves, and taking out of your city's financial reserves is kind of a drastic step, so we need to be very careful. And I would just say that that, until I see that study, I'm not making a decision one way or the other.
Okay. Anyone else? Mr. Brenner?
Yep.
Is this, Christine probably could help me out here, is this the same company that did the Lee Summit study?
Yes, it is. They did a full compensation study in Lee Summit, and we're just asking them to gather data for us on step plans and analyze that data and provide us recommendations on how step plans are structured, and then we will take that information and make recommendations based on that.
And how will that coincide with one that, didn't we do something similar to this four or five years ago?
Yeah, we did a study with CBIZ several years ago, and that was a full compensation study, and we did not include, you know, analysis or implementation information about step plans. So this is, that information is still good, and we've used that to implement several items, but this is focused specifically on step plans.
Thank you. Anyone else? Is there a motion to approve Items C, D, and E on the Consent Agenda?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor, aye.
Aye.
Full same sign, motion carries. You know, we've been continuing public hearings for the last two months. Well, tonight, the chickens have come home to roost. They all got caught up in, speaking of chickens, we're not getting into that tonight. So the first public hearing is Amendment to Unified Development Code.
Mayor, the city has the following exhibit to enter into the record: City Council Information Form with Attachments; Planning Commission Staff Report Memorandum with affidavit of publication in the Examiner on February 10, 2018; Application with Attachments; Title 4 Land Use Section, Blue Springs Code of Ordinances by Reference; and 2014 Comprehensive Plan by Reference; and UDC Text Amendments Application Form Attached; and Bill Number 4553 Approving the Amendments. This is all we have to offer for the record.
On behalf of the city.
All right, thank you, Mayor and Council. Before you this evening, our amendments to 11 sections of the UDC. The first three sections, Section 403.050 Plating, 406.080 Property Owners Associations, and 406.050 Drainage Mans, all address removing the Development and Maintenance Agreement requirement that was added back in 2016. To replace the agreement requirement, standard language will be added from the agreement to the UDC to better address long-term maintenance after subdivisions have been completed. These requirements only impact subdivisions platted from this point forward. Sections 405.030.32 Tobacco Nists and Section 405.030.33 Body Art Services are being added to the UDC to create special use standards, including restrictions on locations and a cap on the number of licenses issued per capita. These restrictions are similar to what Independence had adopted in 2016. Adding restrictions on tobacconist and body art services was also one of the top priorities from the Spirit Council, based on community input provided during their January work session. Tobacconist and body art services will also be defined in Section 411.030. The land use table will be updated to add the tobacconist and body art services as permitted with a conditional use permit in the general business and regional commercial zoning districts. Vehicle repair general will also be added to the regional commercial zoning district to be permitted with a conditional use permit, and only as an accessory to an outdoor sales and services equipment use, as revised in Section 405.050-19. Section 407.040-D3, which is the fence code, will be amended to allow eight-foot fences in multifamily zoning districts and add more flexibility in fence construction when not facing public right-of-way. Section 405.020, which is the residential building type code, will be amended to modify the side setback in the multifamily, or low-density multifamily zoning district for the apartment complex building type to make it more in line with other setbacks in the multifamily zoning districts. Section 405.060, which is the accessory uses, will be amended to modify the building coverage for certain accessory structures and establish a maximum height for accessory structures. Section 404.240, which is the downtown development code, will be amended to update the list of permitted and conditional uses to align with the use groups in the 2015 UDC, and also make modifications to parking and landscaping standards and other minor modifications for added clarification. The Public Safety Citizens Advisory Board reviewed and recommended adoption of restrictions for tobacconist and body art service uses. The Downtown Review Board reviewed and recommended approval of changes to Section 404.240, which is the downtown development code, and staff, the Development Advisory Committee, and the Planning Commission recommend approval of the UDC text amendments as presented, and I'll be happy to answer any questions you have.
Are there any questions from the council?
Uh, Your Honor, I would just like to say, I serve on the DAC, and there are, there's a wide variety of people represented on that commission, quite a few builders and people who are in that industry, and they all reviewed these things, so I would recommend that we go ahead with this.
Anyone else from the council? Seeing none, let's go to the public. Is there anyone in the audience who'd like to speak in support of, in support of, opposition two? Opposition two? Close this public hearing. Anyone like to introduce it?
I'll introduce it, Your Honor.
First reading of Bill Number 4553, An Ordinance Amending Various Sections of the City of Blue Springs Unified Development Code, Section 403.050 Plating, Section 406.050 Drainage System, Section 406.080 Property Owners Associations, Section 405.030.-one Land Use Table, Section 405.050-19 Special Use Standards Vehicle Equipment Sales, Vehicle Equipment Storage Yards, and Vehicle Repair General, Section 407.040-D3 Fences, Section 405.020 Residential Building Type Standards, Section 405.060 Accessory Uses, Section 404.240 Downtown Development Code, Section 411.030 Use Groups and Description of Uses, and adding Section 405.050.32 Tobacconist, and Section 405.050.33 Body Art Service, City of Blue Springs, Missouri.
Move the bill be approved on its first reading and proceed with the second?
Second.
Second.
In discussion? All in favor, aye. Full same sign?
Second reading of Bill Number 4553, An Ordinance Amending Various Sections of the City of Blue Springs Unified Development Code, Section 403.050 Plating, Section 406.050 Drainage System, Section 406.080 Property Owners Associations, Section 405.030.-one Land Use Table, Section 405.050-19 Special Use Standards Vehicle Equipment Sales, Vehicle Equipment Storage Yards, and Vehicle Repair General, Section 407.040-D3 Fences, Section 405.020 Residential Building Type Standards, Section 405.060 Accessory Uses, Section 404.240 Downtown Development Code, Section 411.030 Use Groups and Description of Uses, and adding Section 405.050.32 Tobacconist, and Section 405.050.33 Body Art Service, City of Blue Springs, Missouri.
Move the bill be approved on second reading, given the appropriate ordinance number.
A second?
Second.
Discussion? Roll call, please.
Councilman Levyce.
Aye.
Councilman Fowler.
Aye.
Councilman Carter.
Aye.
Councilman Edmondson.
Aye.
Councilman Culpepper.
Aye.
Councilman Kayler.
Aye.
Mayor Ross.
Aye.
Carried unanimously, given ordinance number 4723.
Next, we have a public hearing on the amendments to petition to establish Fall Creek Community Improvement District Incorporated Agreement.
Mayor, the city has the following exhibit to enter into the record: Public Hearing Notice to Property Owners dated February 14, 2018, affidavit of publication of public hearing with a notice attached, published in the Examiner on February 20 and 27, 2018; memorandum from Gilmore and Bell dated February 20, 2018; developer modeling, revenue projections and project budget, blight study; Bill Number 4554 with second amendment to the first amended and restated petition to establish the Fall Creek Community Improvement District attached as Exhibit A, and second amendment to the cooperative agreement for the district attached as Exhibit B; and Bill Number 4555 with first amendment to the second amended and restated tax increment financing development agreement for the Fall Creek Tax Increment Financing Plan attached as Exhibit A. This is all we have to offer for the record.
Thank you. Mr. David Buschak, on behalf of the city?
Thank you. My name is David Buschak with the law firm of Gilmore and Bell. I will be making the presentation on behalf of the city this evening. This project and the incentives that the city has provided, the TIF plan and the Community Improvement District have an extensive history. I will not go through that history. There is a memo that I've provided for you that's in your packet that provides an extensive summary of all the requested actions. I will keep my comments brief and just cover the requests at a high level. Developer will make their presentation after I speak, and I'd be happy to answer any questions if we need more details, but I'll keep things at a high level for the summary. Developers proposing to incur approximately $8.7 million in additional improvement costs to the Mall of Fall Creek, and their request is to amend the TIF and the CID to provide additional reimbursement for certain of those costs. Of the $8.7 million in total project costs, about $6.3 million will be funded from private sources, and then the additional reimbursement on the public side will be in two forms. One will be approximately $1.7 million from the Community Improvement District in the form of a new sales tax that the CID would impose within just the boundaries of that shopping center, and then second would be a city sales tax contribution in the amount of approximately $740,000, which would be comprised of one-half of the city's one-cent general sales tax that is generated within the boundaries of the project up to a period of, maximum period of 15 years, or until the developer is fully reimbursed for those costs. The TIF plan, as it currently stands today, is projected to repay all of the existing debt within the next calendar year, is planned to terminate sometime next year, and so the amendment that is proposed by the developer on the TIF side would provide for additional reimbursement in the maximum amount of $100,000 to repay the property owners for special assessments that have been imposed by the CID and used to repay that debt over time. One of the issues that we analyzed is the flow of those funds and how those revenues can be used, and again, keeping things at a high level and keeping the summary short, the use of those TIF revenues going forward to reimburse those property owners ties legally back to the original purposes of the TIF and ties directly to the TIF reimbursable project costs that have already been approved by the city. So the actions that are requested of you tonight, first would be amending the CID petition. It would terminate the existing special assessments that are in place, would authorize that new one-cent sales tax that I mentioned that the CID would impose, and would make a new blight finding, which would allow the new CID revenues to be spent in the manner that I described. Second is an amendment to the cooperative agreement to put this arrangement in place, and then third is an amendment to the TIF agreement to put the TIF portion of what I described in place. Few other key points: The CID board, the five-member CID board going forward will be appointed by the mayor, the successor directors will be appointed by the mayor with the consent of you, the city council. There will be one city representative on that board going forward, and the city will serve as the sales tax administrator of the new CID sales tax. So when the dollars are collected by the Department of Revenue, those will be remitted to the city. The city's finance department will handle the disbursement of those revenues in accordance with the amended agreements. That concludes my summary. I'd be happy to answer any questions now or after the developer's presentation.
Are there any questions, council? Seeing none, thank you. Mr. Buschak, on behalf of developer, we have Kurt Peterson.
Good evening, Your Honor. Kurt Peterson with Pulsonelli here, 900 West 48th Place, Kansas City, Missouri, here on behalf of the developer, which is TopStar, which is also Star Development. You may know them by that name. This is just a special purpose entity that owns the shopping center. I'm Mr. Tim Harris. Been able to work for him for a long time, and I had to kind of chuckle in my seat when Mr. Buschak.
Mr. Abraham.
Absolutely.
Do you want to swear in the presence of Ms. Kates?
Yes, sir, I do. Thank you. So I had to chuckle, as I was saying, because as a younger attorney, about 10 years ago, I started having the opportunity to represent Mr. Harris, and this was the first project. I got to come in and experience what was at the time Fall Creek, and I remember getting out the bond documents and really years of documentation that went back to another developer, I think you all, many of you will remember, and there were some complications there, and I remember studying it all, and finally, after memos and all this, I got my head around it. Well, over the last 10 years, and I, well, I hesitated even look over at Ms. Kates, because as we've tried so hard to just totally reposition that center, Mr. Harris did a lot, actually, taking from the first developer to where it is today, but we've really tried to take it to its highest and best use, and we knew it always would take a, what we call an anchor tenant, and we, originally it was supposed to be a movie theater. And again, look, you know, for Ms. Kates, we've tried at least two separate times with movie theaters to make a deal work. We can never make it work. So in short, I'm really truly thrilled with this project after 10 years of working on it, that we have a, an extraordinary movie theater operator that is, wants to come to this center, that we would repurpose a large section of the center for that movie theater operator, but it gets better. The Golden Corral site, which you know has been vacant now for a number of years, and it's just a blight on the center. We've had terrible trouble releasing, as those of you that slow down and drive by or visit the center know, in the inline shopping center, and a lot of it is because you have a vacant Golden Corral. It's a very bad sign for retailers. So part of this project would be, we have that under contract, very pleased to say, not pleased with the price, but we got it done. We know it's very important to do it. Redevelop, brand-new building, we'll put in there. Don't have a tenant yet, but we will. And then also plan to put a building on that pad that's just north of Golden Corral. It's a piece of grass. It was always intended to be a building. It will be under this project. So in short, we're very happy to be here. I won't go into the details that Mr. Buschak very well articulated. Would be happy to talk about any level of detail you'd like, but it's that public-private partnership that we're putting before you tonight that will make this project happen, and thankfully, will really bring this project, after however you measure, 20 years, to its full potential. So thank you, Your Honor, and any questions y'all would have, we'd be happy to talk about them now.
Are there any questions or comments from the council? Councilman Fowler?
Yes, I think those at home are curious to know about movie theater. You mentioned that. Could you elaborate a little bit?
Sure, I did, I did get permission, so that I'm not skating on totally thin ice, even right before the meeting, just to make sure, but you know, the movie theater we're most, most of us are most proud of in Missouri, the biggest movie theater in Missouri, a top 10 movie theater. In the United States, B&amp;B Theaters is who is going to be our user here, our movie theater, which we're just thrilled about. Could go on and on, but y'all, they've done several different projects recently in the area where they have gone into an existing building like this, and because you might, somebody at home or anybody might be thinking, "Well, am I going to get a second-rate movie theater?" These are amazing, what they do, and some of you have seen pictures, I know, of what they've done in other nearby projects, so it's B&amp;B Theaters is who it would be.
Great.
Councilman Culpepper.
Well, we had talked a long time about wanting to have an entertainment center down in that vicinity. It does look pretty sad right now, so I think this is a great addition. It's going to be a destination, which is what we need, so it's 100% improvement.
Councilman Carter.
You care to elaborate on, I mean, we've seen the drawings, and we know a little bit of the backstory on this. It's not just going to be a movie theater, there's more to it.
Right, there's actually a lot of amenities, and the best thing for people to do, I'll say a few things, but is just to go visit one of the B&amp;B Theaters. I think Lee Summit is now open, I'm almost positive, which is probably the closest one to visit, but they have full food service, they have a bar, they, part of it is just my favorite thing to do. I've been able to work with B&amp;B directly a number of times, and some of you maybe have experienced this at a B&amp;B theater or visiting their offices, but in their offices, they always have all these amazing chairs to sit in that are movie theater chairs and popcorn, and you go in and you realize that in every one of these theaters that they do, they have just incredible seating. There's no, you know, kind of general admission type experience. So from the food to the experience right when you walk in, the colors and the lights, to the theaters themselves, they always have the top technology, digital technology, and then the seats, which are my favorites, so those are a few things.
Anyone else? Well, and what I see it doing also is continuing to remove that blight at 40 and 7 as we continue to go south. You know, we did an amazing job there at Price Chopper Company.
Absolutely right.
And all those amenities, and to get rid of that Golden Corral, which is also a blight, would be fantastic.
Your Honor, and then I'll be quiet, I promise, but I get excited because I really see, as I watch the Price Chopper project happen, obviously next door, this is just building on that. It really is. It's infecting the whole area in a good way.
Great. Sounds good.
Thank you.
Is there anyone in, oh, Mr. Johnson here, before we go to the audience?
Your Honor, just a couple of things. First of all, Kurt, thanks for being part of this project. Been working on this a long time, haven't we? Yes, and just a couple of things to point out to connect some dots for the council. You know, there is now a connection between the Price Chopper and the Mall at Fall Creek location, which is hugely instrumental, and the success, I think, of the entire corridor, and tonight you approved the funding agreement for Sunset Plaza, which is there facing 40 Highway and 7, which I think gives us another opportunity to address further priorities of the council in that corridor, so we're very excited, and we hope you bring us some good tenants there for the Golden Corral site. No pressure, but yeah, you gotta do it.
And I must say, I use that connecting street.
Yes.
Comes in handy. Okay, let's go to the audience. Is there anyone in the audience who'd like to speak in support of, in support of, opposition two? Opposition two? Close this public hearing. Who would like to introduce it from District 3?
I'll introduce it, Your Honor. First reading of Bill Number 4554, An Ordinance Approving the Second Amendment to the First amended and restated petition to establish the Fall Creek Community Improvement District, and approving the Second Amendment to the Cooperative Agreement for the District.
Move the bill be approved on its first reading and proceed with the second?
Second?
Second.
Discussion?
If I may.
Is it District 2?
Yes. You saw it coming, didn't you? Mr. Johnson took part of my, part of what I was going to say is that, you know, there was a time back that we had some meetings, and I can remember some people coming in and saying that this corner of Blue Springs would never be a first-rate corner. It was more of a back-setting, second-rate, we couldn't get things in there, and look what we've done in this corner. And, Your Honor, you've been in Blue Springs as long as I have, a little bit longer, maybe a couple of years. I can remember when that corner was the lifeblood of this town.
Absolutely.
And it's good to see that we're getting some of these things back, and we've made some wise decisions, I think, as far as a city, in trying to get things in and trying to work with the infrastructure to assist this growth. So the citizens can kind of look at this and see some of the smart decisions this city made to get some of these businesses in here and redevelop an area that has been blighted, as the study says, blighted for a while, and it's kind of nice that it's in District 2. We're kind of proud of District 2, and we make things happen here.
That's right.
If I may, Your Honor, just a little aside to that, and this has nothing to do with your development, but I was in Johnny's Tavern on Friday watching the NCAAs, and it was It's really a cool place to be, and this is going to make it better.
Anybody else? Been to Johnny's Bar? No. Okay. All in favor, aye? Same sign?
Second reading of bill number 4554. An ordinance approving the second amendment to the first amended and restated petition to establish the Fall Creek Community Improvement District and approving the second amendment to the cooperative agreement for the district.
Move the bill be approved on second reading, given the appropriate ordinance number?
Second?
Second.
Further discussion? Roll call, please.
Councilman Fowler?
Aye.
Councilman Carter?
Aye.
Councilman Edmondson?
Aye.
Councilman Culpepper?
Aye.
Councilman Kayler?
Aye.
Councilman Levison?
Aye.
Mayor Ross?
Aye.
Carried unanimously, given ordinance number 4724.
Continuing with that, we have an introduction reading of bill 4555.
I'll introduce it, your honor.
First reading of bill number 4555. An ordinance approving the first amendment to the second amended and restated Tax Increment Financing Development Agreement between the City of Blue Springs and TopStar LLC for the Fall Creek Tax Increment Financing Plan.
Move the bill be approved on its first reading and proceed with the second.
Second?
Second.
Discussion? All in favor, aye? Same sign?
Second reading of bill number 4555. An ordinance approving the first amendment to the second amended and restated Tax Increment Financing Development Agreement between the City of Blue Springs and TopStar LLC for the Fall Creek Tax Financing Increment Financing Plan.
Move the bill be approved on second reading, given the appropriate ordinance number?
Second?
Second.
Discussion? Roll call?
Councilman Carter?
Aye.
Councilman Edmondson?
Aye.
Councilman Culpepper?
Aye.
Councilman Kayler?
Aye.
Councilman Levison?
Aye.
Councilman Fowler?
Aye.
Mayor Ross?
Aye.
Carried unanimously, given ordinance number 4726.
Second bill, 4557.
I'll introduce it, your honor.
First reading of bill number 4557. An ordinance approving final plat for Southwest Park Lot A, Lot 1A replat of Chapman Woods Lot 3.
Move the bill be approved on its first reading and proceed with the second.
Second?
Second.
Discussion? All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Same sign?
No.
That is a vote of six to one. All right. Second reading of bill number 4557. An ordinance approving final plat for Southwest Park Lot 1, replat of Chapman Woods Lot 3.
Move the bill be approved on second reading, given the appropriate ordinance number?
Second?
Second.
Discussion? Roll call.
Councilman Culpepper?
Aye.
Councilman Kayler?
Aye.
Councilman Levison?
No.
Councilman Fowler?
Aye.
Councilman Carter?
Aye.
Councilman Edmondson?
Aye.
Mayor Ross?
Aye.
Carried with a vote of six to one, given ordinance number 4727.
Next, we have a public hearing on a vacation of platted bill line 3400 Southwest Liggett Road.
Mayor, the city has the following exhibit to enter into the record. Planning Commission staff report with attachments. Affidavit of publication in the examiner on February 24, 2018. Application with attachments, 185-foot notification map. Names and addresses of property owners within 185 feet of the site. Copy of letter sent to said property owners. Title for land use section. Blue Springs Code of Ordinances by reference. 2014 Comprehensive Plan by reference. Letter dated February 16, 2018, from Jenny Graham. An email dated February 21, 2018, from Chris Sandy, Director of Public Works, and bill number 4556. This is all we have to offer for the record.
Mayor, on behalf of the city?
All right. Thank you, mayor and council. Before you this evening is request to rezone the Southwest Park site, which is located north of Wyatt Road and approximately 1,300 feet west of Southwest 7 Highway. This request is to rezone approximately 59.16 acres from SF-12 PRO and SF-7 PRO to PLOS, the Public Land and Open Space zoning district. This entire property was annexed into the city in 2003, and a preliminary plat was approved in 2007 for 117 single-family lots, which was at the time known as Chapman Woods. However, construction plans were never submitted, and the preliminary plat expired in 2009. A for-sale-only final plat was recorded in 2007, which subdivided the acreage into the three lots that are shown on the screen. The city acquired all three lots for future park and civic space development. The potential future uses are most appropriate in the PLOS zoning district, and therefore the city is recommending the rezoning. At the public, at the Planning Commission public hearing on March 12, one resident did speak in opposition to the request and expressed concerns about traffic when 12th Street is extended to Wyatt Road in the future. The commission asked about future plans for the site, with staff mentioning presentation from Prairie Township at the March 5th city council meeting. However, there are no timelines or details for any other park improvements for the site at this time. Both staff and the Planning Commission recommend approval of the rezoning request for Southwest Park. Be happy to answer any questions you may have.
Are there any questions from council? Seeing none, thank you. Is developer or representative? We're a developer. That's right, we are. Well, I don't see any opposition on that board, so we're going to go straight to the public. Is there one in the audience that likes to speak in support of? In support of? Opposition to? Opposition to? Close this public hearing. There are two related bills introduced that relates to this.
I'll introduce it, your honor.
First reading of bill number 4556. An ordinance rezoning property from SF-12 PRO, large lot, single-family, planned residential overlay, and SF-7 PRO, single-family, planned residential overlay, to PLOS, public land and open space.
Move the bill be approved on its first reading and proceed with the second.
Second?
Second.
Discussion? All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Same sign?
Second reading of bill number 4556. An ordinance rezoning property from SF-12 PRO, large lot, single-family, planned residential overlay, and SF-7 PRO, single-family, planned residential overlay, to PLOS, public land and open space.
Move the bill be approved on second reading, given the appropriate ordinance number?
Second?
Second.
Discussion? Roll call?
Councilman Edmondson?
Aye.
Councilman Culpepper?
Aye.
Councilman Kayler?
Aye.
Councilman Levison?
Aye.
Councilman Fowler?
Aye.
Councilman Carter?
Aye.
Mayor Ross?
Aye.
Carried unanimously, given ordinance number 4726.
Second bill, 4557.
I'll introduce it, your honor.
First reading of bill number 4557. An ordinance approving final plat for Southwest Park Lot A, Lot 1A replat of Chapman Woods Lot 3.
Move the bill be approved on its first reading and proceed with the second.
Second?
Second.
Discussion? All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Same sign?
No.
That is a vote of six to one. All right. Second reading of bill number 4557. An ordinance approving final plat for Southwest Park Lot 1, replat of Chapman Woods Lot 3.
Move the bill be approved on second reading, given the appropriate ordinance number?
Second?
Second.
Discussion? Roll call.
Councilman Culpepper?
Aye.
Councilman Kayler?
Aye.
Councilman Levison?
No.
Councilman Fowler?
Aye.
Councilman Carter?
Aye.
Councilman Edmondson?
Aye.
Mayor Ross?
Aye.
Carried unanimously, given ordinance number 4727.
Next, we have a public hearing on a vacation of platted bill line 3400 Southwest Liggett Road.
Mayor, the city has the following exhibit to enter into the record. Planning Commission staff report with attachments. Affidavit of publication in the examiner on February 24, 2018. Application with attachments, 185-foot notification map. Names and addresses of property owners within 185 feet of the site. Copy of letter sent to said property owners. Title for land use section. Blue Springs Code of Ordinances by reference. 2014 Comprehensive Plan by reference. And bill number 4558. This is all we have to offer for the record.
Okay, Mike?
Evening, mayor, members of city council. Mike Malin, Assistant Director, Community Development, on behalf of the city. This is a request to vacate a 50-foot build line, platted build line on the property at 3400 Southwest Liggett Road. Property is shown here on the map, highlighted in the black and white line. Request is because prior to the city annexing the property in 1986, the property was platted as part of the Jacomo Heights subdivision, recorded in Jackson County in 1959. That subdivision plaque contained a 50-foot build line across the front of the lot. The current Unified Development Code has a 30-foot front setback for houses in the SF-7 zoning district for the detached house, large lot building type of 30 feet. And so the request is so that the homeowner can build under the existing zoning regulations rather than the platted build line from 1959. As I said, this would allow the property owner to develop an addition onto the front of his house. A similar request was made and approved on a property just to the north of this a few years back, so this is in keeping with that. As such, staff recommends approval. Planning Commission recommended approval of this request as well. And that concludes our presentation. I'm happy to answer any questions.
Are there any question from the council? Am I seeing none? Thank you. So in this particular case, we don't have anyone. We're doing it again, right?
No, they haven't.
The applicant is here?
Yes.
Would you like to come up, be sworn in, make any comments, or are you satisfied with what's been presented?
I'm satisfied with it.
Good call. Okay. We'll go to the public. Anyone in the audience like to speak in support of? Support of? Opposition to? Opposition to? Close the public hearing. Who would like to introduce it?
I'll introduce it, your honor.
First reading of bill number 4558. An ordinance vacating an existing 50-foot platted building line generally located east of Southwest Liggett Road. 570, I'm sorry, my contacts are goofy here. Is it 575 feet south of Southwest Moreland? No, I've got contacts in, and they're just goofy. South of Southwest Moreland, you're trying to get those glasses in. South of Southwest Moreland School Road with an address of 3400 Southwest Liggett Road in Blue Springs, Jackson County, Missouri.
Move the bill be approved on its first reading and proceed with the second.
Second?
Second.
Discussion? All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Same sign?
Second reading of bill number 4558. An ordinance vacating an existing 50-foot platted building line generally located east of Southwest Liggett Road, 575 feet south of Southwest Moreland School Road with an address of 3400 Southwest Liggett Road in Blue Springs, Jackson County, Missouri.
Move the bill be approved on second reading, given the appropriate ordinance number?
Second?
Second.
Discussion? Roll call?
Councilman Kayler?
Aye.
Councilman Levison?
Aye.
Councilman Fowler?
Aye.
Councilman Carter?
Aye.
Councilman Edmondson?
Aye.
Councilman Fowler?
Aye.
Councilman Carter?
Aye.
Councilman Edmondson?
Aye.
Councilman Culpepper?
Aye.
Mayor Ross?
Aye.
Carried unanimously, given ordinance number 4728.
Next, we have a public hearing on the rezoning of 2005 Northeast Jefferson Street.
Mayor, the city has the following exhibit to enter into the record. Planning Commission packet with attachments. Site location map. Site aerial map. Affidavit of publication in the examiner on February 24, 2018. Application with attachments, 185-foot notification map. Names and addresses of property owners within 185 feet of the site. Copy of letter sent to said property owners. Title for land use. Blue Springs Code of Ordinances by reference. 2014 Comprehensive Plan by reference. And bill number 4559. This is all we have to offer for the record.
Mike, you're up again.
Thank you once again. This is a request for the rezoning of approximately 29 acres located at the northeast corner of Northeast 20th Street and Northeast Jefferson Street from currently zoned light industrial under the county zoning to light industrial under the city's zoning. This site is very familiar with everybody. This is the project site for Forcia. The light industrial zoning classification would allow the manufacturing general land use that is being proposed for the property. The property is, excuse me, currently vacant. The manufacturing limited, or manufacturing general land use is permitted by right in the light industrial zoning district. The building type proposed falls under the industrial general type, which is also permitted by right in the light industrial zoning district. Staff and Planning Commission both reviewed this and recommend approval. Should this be approved, I would like to point out there is also a final plat on this evening's agenda. If this is approved, we would recommend that Condition 12 under the ordinance, Condition 12 under the ordinance for the final plat be removed due to the fact that the Unified Development Code amendments previously approved by council this evening would remove the requirement for that condition in relation to developments and maintenance agreements. Those would no longer be pertinent because those are being rolled into the city code. Thus, we don't need that condition anymore, should this be approved.
So, Mike, we would ask for that amendment on bill 4560, right?
Yes, Agenda Item 16.
Okay. Any questions, Mike? Counsel?
Seeing none. Well, I certainly want to acknowledge one of the key players in getting Forcia here, who is no longer with us but came back tonight, especially since we have a new friend with
as amended, an ordinance approving final plat for Forcia plat.
Move the bill as amended be approved on second reading, given the appropriate ordinance number?
For a second?
Second.
Discussion? Roll call.
Councilman Fowler?
Aye.
Councilman Carter?
Aye.
Councilman Edmondson?
Aye.
Councilman Culpepper?
Aye.
Councilman Kaler?
Aye.
Councilman Levesey?
Aye.
Mayor Ross?
Aye.
Carried unanimously, given ordinance number forty-seven thirty.
Next is introduction reading of bill forty-five sixty-one.
I'll introduce it, your honor.
First reading of bill number forty-five sixty-one, an ordinance approving the four pillars, third plat, lots seventy-one through one oh-two, and tracks G through K.
Move the bill be approved on its first reading and proceed with the second?
For a second?
Second.
Discussion? All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Hold the same sign.
Second reading of bill number forty-five sixty-one, an ordinance approving the four pillars, third plat, lots seventy-one through one oh-two, and tracks G through K.
Move the bill be approved on second reading, given the appropriate ordinance number?
For a second?
Second.
Discussion? Roll call.
Councilman Carter?
Aye.
Councilman Edmondson?
Aye.
Councilman Culpepper?
Aye.
Councilman Kaler?
Aye.
Councilman Levesey?
Aye.
Councilman Fowler?
Aye.
Mayor Ross?
Aye.
Carried unanimously, given ordinance number forty-seven thirty-one.
Next, we have introduction reading of bill forty-five sixty-one. Did we just did that?
We just did that. It was like, oh, my gosh, I don't have anymore.
First and foremost.
That's what I just.
Thank you. We got through all those public hearings that caught up with us. Yes.
Your honor?
Yes.
I think before we proceed, we should give a gold star to Cheryl for all that reading tonight. Wow.
And I didn't miss you once.
No question about it. Considering done, you got a gold star. How about that? Okay, we're going now from public hearings to presentations. So, we have a presentation by the volunteers and police services.
Good evening, everyone.
Good evening.
Tonight, we're here to recognize a very special group of people and the things they do for our cities. So, we want to start with a little history and origin of the volunteers and police service, then go right into recognition. The origin of the VIPS program, Volunteers and Police Service, is when George, President George W. Bush created a U.S. Freedom Corps to build on the countless acts of service, sacrifice, and generosity that followed September eleventh. When he announced the USAFC in his two thousand two State of the Union address, he called on all Americans to serve a cause greater than themselves. Citizen Corps was created to help coordinate volunteer activities to make communities safer, stronger, and better prepared to respond to any emergency situation. It provides opportunities for people to participate in a range of measures to make their families, their homes, and their communities safer from threats of crime, terrorism, and disasters of all kinds. Citizen Corps is partnered program built on successful efforts in place in many communities around the country to prevent crime and respond to emergencies. About the VIPS. The International Association of Chiefs of Police manages and implements the Volunteers and Police Services program in partnership with the Bureau of Justice, Bureau of Justice Assistance, Office of Justice, Programs, and U.S. Departments of Justice. The VIPS program provides support and resources for agencies interested in developing or enhancing a volunteer program and for citizens who wish to volunteer their time and skills with a community law enforcement agency. The program's ultimate goal is to enhance the capacity of state, local, campus, tribal, and territorial law enforcement to utilize volunteers. The VIPS staff shares information and resources with law enforcement agencies that want to expand their programs, increase the use of volunteers in existing programs, help citizens learn about and become involved in the VIPS program. The Blue Springs VIPS program. The Blue Springs VIPS began in May of two thousand eight. Since its inception and through two thousand seventeen, our volunteers have logged an amazing fifty-five thousand, two hundred and fifty-nine and three quarters hours of service. We currently have fifty volunteers for the Blue Springs Police Department. The value that that brings to the department. During two thousand seventeen alone, VIPS volunteered five thousand and fifty hours. The Department of Labor estimates that if volunteers were paid employees, their average pay would be valued at twenty-dollar, twenty-four dollars and fourteen cents an hour. This calculates to an approximate savings of one thousand, one hundred twenty-one thousand nine hundred and seventy-seven dollars in two thousand seventeen alone. Some of the jobs that our VIPS perform, they take care of alarm reports. Every time an officer goes to a false, to an alarm call, they write a report. Well, so many false alarms, the city starts charging for the time that officers spend. One of our volunteers actually calculates that and keeps track of the reports and works with our finance department. They go out on crime prevention presentations. They assist in all of our parades. They file our animal control reports, work on our detective unit filing all the fingerprint cards. They work in our property unit, working on filing. They also help with traffic control at various events and at various hazards. We recently started a program where they go out, check for handicap violation or fire lane, fire lane violations, and they put warnings on to let the public know these are reserved spots for special, special events or special uses. We started a program a couple of years ago in which our volunteers go out and when someone goes on vacation, they ask the police department to come watch their house. Our volunteers do that, which allows our officers to stay on patrol. They also go patrol parks and businesses. They deploy our radar trailers. They work in our courts. They work in our dispatch. They assist with our National Night Out Against Crime. They give building tours. They work DWI checkpoints right up until we couldn't have them anymore. They assist with our Citizens Police Academy. They take our Dare Mustang to the Dare graduations, many car shows where our cars requested because we have such a unique car. They take vehicles and relay equipment to keep our officers. To take one vehicle to the garage, it takes at least two people. We gotta drive the car there, follow them, then bring them back. Our VIPS can do this, leaving our officers to work the road. They work our information desk. They assist in dispatch by taking non-emergency calls and taking phone messages and anything else that is needed throughout the department, they're willing to do. Here, we have Santa, Santa Steve Knowles working our National Night Out. We've created a new program this year with parking the way it is, with people parked away. We had a hayride for them to take to get to the event. Santa Steve kept the kids entertained. Here, we have a couple of VIPS showing off our police cars, our Dare Mustang at our Main Street car shows. Some major events and accomplishments in two thousand seventeen. Volunteer Billy Washington was awarded the Volunteer of the Year after being nominated by police and the court staff. Twelve of our VIPS volunteered enough time to receive the Presidential Volunteer Service Award. There were seven golds, one silver, three bronze, and one lifetime achievement. To get a lifetime achievement award, that takes five thousand hours of service alone. Our volunteers deploy, keep statistics on traffic speeds with our two new smart trailers that we were able to purchase with grant funds, several parks, department, five K runs, our Fall Fun Fest, National Night Out, and parking during special events such as Main Street activities. They participated and assisted with the shop with the Blue Springs Cop. They assist with the mayor's Christmas tree lighting. Hey, where'd it go? Our VIPS contacted eleven hundred people alone during the Fall Fun Fest and told them about the FBI Child ID App. Our, our VIPS assisted in the annual fallen officer, fallen police officers memorial service and the Vietnam Memorial Service. They assist with each Citizens Police Academy that has now had over five hundred graduates. Some of our newest projects, we've trained to do the vacation watches, our parks of business checks. They've also been trained in how to give out parking warnings like we mentioned earlier. This was their old police, their volunteer service. We now have a, a new, new retired patrol vehicle that is, is gonna be their new patrol, their vehicle they do their services in. This is a couple of our VIPS that are deploying the smart trailers. That's our old one. We got our new one earlier this year. We got two of those that can be deployed. This is VIPS assisting in parking enforcement to keep, keep our citizens' cars from being towed to the lot just north of us. And then, from then till now, we have done a lot of things. Since the beginning of the program, we have more than quadrupled our number of volunteers. We currently have fifty, fifty volunteers. We have an office with four computers in it for them to use and utilize rather than, uh, I need to do this, but can I have your computer? We get, we got them their own computers so they can do that. They have uniforms, they have safety gear, they have foul weather gear so they can go out when it's cold and rainy like today. They have training every quarter of some sort. They pick many duties that the officers, so the officers can remain in service. Our goals for this coming year, we want to build upon our extra patrol request and provide more, more service to those people as they go out of town so that we can keep their property safe. Want to continue with the parking enforcement. We want to assist the police department anyway to make this a better community to live, work, and visit because we are on the move and in the right direction. Just for you, Mayor. This is some of our VIPS from our last years, our last presentation. If I could get all the VIPS to stand up and be recognized.
Yeah, because I haven't cashed into those yet, so I'm just waiting until I get up to a certain amount. Let's come down, let's come downstairs there.
You know, if I did the math right, based on your numbers, the VIPS has saved one million three hundred and thirty-three thousand dollars over the lifetime period that they've been operating. So, pretty healthy savings or service provided to the city.
It's about time we take that to the bank, yeah.
Yeah, there's your check, buddy.
You want to have the rest of the VIPS come up and stand up here as we present this check? Come on up here, VIPS.
Well, no. This is about you, not about us.
Jeff. You guys can, this is the mic. Did you ever say something?
You look like Mike.
Yes. I forgot you were saying something. Sure.
You can get us here.
Who wants to come up and help hold this check? I don't want to cover it, yeah. Go ahead.
Come on, you gotta get down.
Come on up here. All right, thank you. All right. Good seeing you.
Thank you so much for your service. Were there any questions you had about the VIPS program? No questions, thank you. Okay, thank you so much. Now, we have another presentation from the community organizations in support of the local use tax, which is gonna be an election two weeks from tomorrow. Time is drawing nice. So, first, we're gonna call Bill Esman up representing the Economic Development Council.
Thank you, Mayor, members of City Council. At its December seventh, two thousand seventeen meeting, the Economic Development Council heard a presentation from the city on the use tax. After consideration, the Economic Development Council voted unanimously to support the use tax ballot measure, which will go before the voters on April third. I understand that we're all familiar with the particulars, so in the interest of time, I'll simply summarize the support of the EDC to support the use tax. The purpose of the use tax is to equal the playing field between local merchants and out-of-state merchants, and therefore, the use tax is an incentive to buy locally supporting hometown merchants rather than avoiding payment of local sales tax by making online purchases from out-of-state merchants. And, sales tax is the largest general government revenue source for the city of Blue Springs and is used to finance government capital improvements. Successful package, passage of the use tax would enable the city of Blue Springs to collect up to four hundred thousand dollars a year in revenue for vital city services such as the police service, infrastructure, street maintenance, and parks maintenance. Therefore, let the record show that on the twentieth day of December two thousand seventeen, the Blue Springs Economic Development Council voted in favor of supporting the proposed ballot issue for the city of Blue Springs Economic Development Council. I'm Bill Esman, member.
All right, thank you so much. And next, Cindy Miller from Downtown Alive.
Hi, Mayor Ross and the council. Thank you for letting us speak to you tonight. We appreciate it. I gotta get my glasses on. I'm Vice President of our Downtown Alive meeting, and during our February twenty-seventh board meeting, we too discussed the use tax and all the benefits that we felt like it would bring to our downtown merchants and other merchants throughout the city. So, we have adopted a resolution to support the use tax ballot issue, and I'm just gonna read that to you at the risk of being redundant. Whereas, on Tuesday, April third, two thousand eighteen, Blue Springs registered voters will be asked in this, if the city of Blue Springs, Missouri should impose a local use tax at the same rate as the local sales tax rate, currently two and one-half percent, provided that if the local sales tax rate is reduced or raised by voter approval, the local use tax rate shall also be reduced or raised by the same action. And whereas, a use tax will be applied to purchases made from out-of-state vendors that ship to Missouri, specifically Blue Springs customers. Out-of-state and online businesses currently do not collect local sales tax. And whereas, the purpose of the use tax is to equal the playing field between local merchants and out-of-state merchants on the purchased products that are not currently subject to the sales tax within the sales taxing jurisdiction. And whereas, the use tax is an incentive to buy locally rather than from out-of-state merchants by forcing out-of-state merchants to collect tax on their sales within the state for remittance to the state to be passed on to local government. And whereas, sales tax is the largest general government revenue source for the city of Blue Springs and is used to finance government and capital improvements. And whereas, the city of Blue Springs could collect up to four hundred thousand dollars a year in revenue for vital city services such as police service, infrastructure, street maintenance, and parks maintenance. And whereas, a use tax return will not be required to be filed by persons whose purchases from out-of-state vendors do not in total exceed two thousand dollars in any calendar year. And whereas, the mission of Downtown Blue Springs, Main Street, Inc., Doing Business as Downtown Alive, is to promote, develop, and strengthen the economic base in which the business community can grow and prosper. And whereas, the use tax would apply local sales taxes to internet and other out-of-state purchases, helping to address what is a rapid and dramatic shift in consumer spending behaviors and eliminate the disadvantage brick-and-mortar retailers have in the market against online sales. And whereas, a number of surrounding jurisdictions already have a use tax in place, and several others are expected to be considering this issue very soon. And whereas, the use tax rates will mirror existing sales tax rates already in place and will not be collected in addition to current taxes since use taxes will be collected only on out-of-state purchases. And whereas, when the voters of this community have approved the various sales taxes, they have done so with the expectation that all eligible sales would be assessed at their fair share of the tax so that they could receive essential city services. Now, be it therefore resolved on this twenty-seventh day of February, two thousand eighteen, that the Downtown Blue Springs, Main Street, Inc. Board of Directors voted in favor of supporting the proposed ballot issue. And we have submitted to you our resolution number two thousand eighteen dash one, which was signed by Jennifer Hostchild, our two thousand eighteen president of our Downtown Alive Board.
Thank you so much.
All right, thank you. And I might get a gold star for reading with Cheryl. All right, thank you so much.
All right. Last but not least, we have Rebecca Swank, who is Chairman of the Blue Springs Chamber of Commerce. Welcome.
Thank you, Mayor Ross, City Council members. As Mayor Ross said, my name is Rebecca Swank. I am chairman of, chairman of the Board of the Blue Springs Chamber of Commerce. The chamber represents four hundred and eighty-four businesses in the area and a combined employee count of over thirteen thousand five hundred. At our regular February board meeting, our Board of Directors passed a resolution in support of the proposed use tax that will be held on the ballot on April third, two thousand eighteen. The resolution says, and these are just pieces of the resolution, whereas, sales tax is the largest general government revenue source for the city of Blue Springs and is used to finance government and capital improvements. And whereas, the mission of the Blue Springs Chamber of Commerce is to promote, develop, and facilitate a strong economic environment in which the business community can grow and prosper. And whereas, the purpose of the use tax is to equal the playing field between hometown and out-of-state merchants. And whereas, the use tax would simply apply local sales taxes to internet and outer, other out-of-state purchases, helping to address what is a rapid and dramatic shift in consumer spending behaviors. And whereas, a number of surrounding jurisdictions already have a use tax in place, and several others are expected to be considering this issue very soon. And whereas, the use tax rates will mirror existing sales tax rates already in place and will not be collected in addition to current taxes since use taxes will be collected only on out-of-state purchases now. Be it therefore resolved on this fourteenth day of February, two thousand eighteen, that the Blue Springs Chamber of Commerce Board of Directors supports the proposed ballot issue. I know that some of you are aware that the chamber has established a political action committee to help spread the word about this important issue. I wanted to let you know that we also have a candidate forum scheduled for this coming Friday, March twenty-third, seven thirty a.m. at St. Mary's Medical Center Education Room. Candidates running for office will attend, and we will share information about the use tax at that time. Thank you.
Thank you so much, Rebecca. For those that probably haven't seen it yet, the political action committee that some are involved in, we have electronic digital billboard ad that started running today with two messages on it, and that's the digital electronic board between Woods Chapel and Seven Highway on I-70, and that will run through Election Day. So, thank all of you for your support of this. This is very critical. This is revenue that's much needed in the city. And every time you see a UPS or FedEx truck running down your street, they're delivering goods that we're not collecting money on. But they're using our streets and any other services that the city might provide. So, thank you so much for that support. And hopefully, people will get out and see the need and support it. That brings us to mayoral announcements. First, I've got a number of congratulations to, to offer this evening. One is to our District One City Councilman Dale Carter, who is the two thousand eighteen Academy of Country Music Large Market Personality of the Year. So, congratulations.
Thank you, appreciate that.
Another congratulation goes to our own city attorney for winning the trivia contest that I think that you were a master of ceremonies at, or a moderator. So, you don't, she doesn't have her medal on tonight, but we put those on later, I suppose. We also want to congratulate Sergeant, Sergeant, is he still there? Sergeant Sergeant and Officer Hughes for receiving the Community Service Award last Thursday with the first responders luncheon. So, congratulations to you and, and Officer Hughes. I also want to introduce our new Deputy City Clerk, Julia Pittman, sitting right over here. This is new Deputy City Clerk. So, welcome, Julia. Okay, those the only congratulations that I have. Anybody else need to be congratulated before I move on? Okay. You know, we're wrapping up the March, the month of March, which is Women History Month, for those that don't know, and we try to recognize women that have made contribution. So, tonight's quote comes from Dr. Mae Jimmison. She was the first African-American astronaut, and her quote is, "Never be limited by other people's limited imagination," end quote. Now, we will move on to visitors. I have one visitor's appearance form from Rhonda Smith, and she wants to talk about the city code of Eastonit. Come on up, Rhonda, introduce yourself and tell us what's on your mind.
Good evening, Mayor and Councilman. My name's Rhonda Smith. I'm actually new to Blue Springs, only been here about a year. Love the city, love working here. I work at St. Mary's. It's a beautiful hospital. It's an amazing hospital. I'll try to make this short and sweet because I know it's late. We moved in over on Sunnyside School Road. We have a shared driveway with another house. We've never had a problem until they decided to move, and they now have new renters. And we've never, we've always been able to communicate with our neighbors, say, hey, can you move a vehicle? We're gonna be pulling in here, what have you. The new residents of the property next to us, we've asked them repeatedly to slide their vehicles back so we can pull in and use our garage. My husband and I both use our garage to park our vehicles. They're opting not to use their garage because they said they use it as a weight room. That's fine. They can use their house however they choose to. But when they park at night, they park in a way that we either can't get in all the way or we have to...
or we have to come really close to hitting their vehicles. So, it's gonna either cause us to either park on the street, which we have done before, but we like to use the use of our garage. We went, we started off with, we asked the police officers, and they said they cannot do anything because it's not illegal to park in that driveway because there's no city ordinance saying that they can't park there or they can't park far enough back from their garage so we can use ours. We also approached the code enforcement, they said there is no city ordinance, there is no code regarding this subject, but they have had other complaints. We contacted our councilperson, we've also went to the courthouse. We don't want to sue anyone because we're not wanting money, we just want them to slide back twenty feet, that's all we want. We did go to our property manager, which is Plaid Management. They sent a letter to the original owners, I have a copy of that. They also sent us a contract that was dated from January fourth, nineteen ninety-four, but the city said they cannot use it because it is county or a contractor, it's through JPW Acres Declaration of Restrictions, where it says in there, a joint driveway easement restriction, but since it's not city, it cannot be enforced. But I have a copy of that, if you guys need to see that. We also have photos where the vehicles are sitting in the driveway, so if you need to see that. But we're just asking if there's not a way we can move forward or what we could do to develop a code for other people in single-family and multifamily districts such as this.
You know, I'm not an attorney, we have a city attorney here, but it sounds almost like it's a civil issue.
The civil court stated that they cannot make him move, they cannot make him move back. It just would be all for monetary value.
Now, do you own your property, and the house next door is rental property?
We rent our property.
Okay, both of them are rental property.
Yes.
Okay, so it sound like to me the landlord, that's a landlord issue.
Okay.
The landlord probably shouldn't have made a single driveway to serve both.
Right.
You know, without causing some problems and headaches that you're dealing with. I would defer to the city attorney, but I would think that that's a landlord matter that he needs to resolve for you guys, because certainly, the city can't do it for you.
The mayor's probably correct, but I'd like to talk to you after the meeting, if you want to.
Okay.
Okay.
Yes, ma'am, thank you.
Is it the same landlord that owns both sides?
No, sir, the original people that were living there, they were the original owners, but they moved, and I think they moved like somewhere in Kansas City downtown area. These are just other renters. I know that they're not run by the same property management that we have. And our property managers did come out and post a notice, notification to them, but not, it's like they stay back for about twelve hours, and then they slowly, every day, it's like creeps up farther and farther. You know, like I said, we aren't looking to gain money out of this. We just want a respectful neighborhood that we can talk to them, they're like, hey, move your vehi, can you move your vehicle, we're moving stuff, and that's all we're asking for, is just to create a, maybe a city code or an ordinance that could help other people like us. Thank you very much.
All right, thank you.
Yeah, Your Honor, maybe I would just suggest that when we look at developments going forward, we consider these shared driveways, because they really are an issue. You have people who cannot, yeah, they can't use their, their properties, and as Kent just said, it's a safety issue also.
Okay. Anything else to come before, so I don't have any other visitor's appearance forms, I accept the motion to adjourn.
移到
For a second?
Second.
On the favor, right?
Aye.
Same sign, we adjourn.